Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The microphones have been turned on. The cameras are rolling. A very warm welcome to you all for tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. We kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhart.
Here.
Mike Clements.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Here.
Craig Malodra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Gene Begowen.
Here.
Jim Merdecky.
Here.
Robert Swenson.
Here.
Full house tonight, folks. We're going to begin tonight's meeting, as we do all council meetings, with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask my and our community's dear friend, Tammy Presley, to please lead us in the pledge. You weren't expecting that, were you?
Wow, I'm so excited. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tammy. Folks, we're going to begin the meeting on a somber note, and then we're going to transition to a celebratory note, and then begin with the agenda. For those of you who are joining us this evening, may have noticed that the City of Geneva flag is flying at half-staff. It has been for several days. The City of Geneva lost three gentlemen who served their country and who served this community. Alderman James Mayer was a teacher first and foremost. He taught at Coltrapp Elementary School for years and years and years, and at Coltrapp Middle School for years and years and years. In fact, his students, our city attorney Chuck Radovich, for example, was in his first class as a teacher. The story goes that the students who had Mr. Mayer would fondly say that Mr. Mayer was a very, very good math teacher and an extraordinary teacher on World War II history. So apparently, he spent half his class time talking about World War II as well. He also served in the city council from 1975 to 1979. We also lost a gentleman, a true gentleman, Dick Lindholm, who was the mayor of Geneva. Prior to serving as mayor, he was a member of the city council. He served as mayor from 1965 to 1973. His photo is on the wall back there. It's on the second row, approximately seven photos from the right. A heck of a guy. Lived in Geneva his entire life, and he was laid to rest just this past weekend. And news just broke a couple of days ago about our former police chief, Scott Brundage. Scott served the Geneva Police Department for 28 years, retiring as chief in 1979. So he, Chief Brundage, served with both Mayor Lindholm and Alderman Mayer. Mr. Brundage, or Chief Brundage, I should say, lived his entire life in Geneva. At the tender age of 93, he passed. I want to share a personal story regarding Chief Brundage, and I shared this with Chief Antonori earlier. Every year during Swedish days, we host a Settlers' Breakfast for those who have lived in Geneva 15 years or more. And oftentimes, we, it's an eclectic group, to say the least, but we honor those who have lived in Geneva the longest. And one year, Scott Brundage was the winner, and he won this beautiful bouquet of flowers. And I, as host of that event, said to Chief Brundage, "Chief, share with us your fondest memory of when you were police chief in Geneva, or perhaps police officer in Geneva, or sergeant." And he was all three. And he said without a moment's notice, or excuse me, a moment's hesitation, "Oh, my fondest memory was arresting you." That's all I'm going to say. So I think it was swimming in the pool beyond appropriate hours. So tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we send our thoughts and our warm feelings to the families of both Chief, or excuse me, of all three, Alderman Mayer, Mayor Lindholm, and Chief Brundage, and I invite you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thanks very much. With respect to the celebratory note, just a couple of weeks ago, the governor of Illinois released a press release announcing that 200 men and women throughout Illinois have been so designated as being honored in concert with the state of Illinois's bicentennial that the governor's office and the Department of Veterans Affairs identified 200 men and women throughout Illinois for serving their country and for serving their community. And one of those members, one of those honorees, happens to be our friend and former colleague, Alderman Ron Singer. Alderman Ron Singer received a lovely letter from the governor. The press release has been distributed generally now as well. So I know Ron, and we all know Ron. I'm certain that he is very, very proud. For those of you who don't know, Ron served during the Korean conflict. He is a very proud and very active member of American Legion Post '75. So tonight, we send Ron our congratulations, and of course, our thanks for his service, and we certainly hope that he's doing well. So, thank you. Onto the agenda, ladies and gentlemen. Item 3A, public hearing. We have the Art on Fire Award presentations, and we have a very distinguished friend of ours, Mr. Vitang, with us tonight, who's going to tee this up for us. I've told all the artists that arrived that we're giving away $100,000 in prize money tonight.
Close to it.
Close. Good evening.
Evening. I'm Tim Vitang. I'm chair of the Geneva Cultural Arts Commission, and it's an honor to be here. This is always a very fun evening for those of us that enjoy the arts in the community. This is quite a program. It's open to all artists, not just Geneva residents. There's no age restrictions. You pick a hydrant, submit your design. The city will let you know if it meets the requirements, which are very simple. Basically, we don't want it painted black or camouflaged, anything that would make it difficult for the fire department to find it. Right, chief?
That's why the chief's here tonight, just to...
Yes. There's over 1,500 fire hydrants in town, so the contest can go on for quite a while. We'd love to see them all painted eventually. This is the sixth year for Art on Fire, and we now have over 100 hydrants painted. While many are in the center of town, you can find them throughout Geneva. There's an updated map with locations available on the city's website, so you can just click on it, and it'll show you where they all are. I'll show you some of them here. This is one by Claire Jennings. If any of the artists are here, make sure I recognize you. And we have Dogs of Fairway Circle. This one doesn't have a name, but lots of balloons or polka dots on it. Harrison Husky by Haley Jennings. Ice Cream with Sprinkles. Everybody kind of liked that one when we looked at them. By Paige Jennings. Lost at Sea. Violet Shay McCann. Spaghetti Pot. Sarah Canha. I'm sure I'm not pronouncing the name right. Then we have West Patriots by Jane Conforti. We have a few more, but we'll hold off for a minute. The voters consist of the Geneva Arts Commission and the Public Art Advisory Committee, and also Chris Rannie. He's an, he was an intern in the Economic Development Department, and he really deserves the credit for doing all the legwork on it. I just get to get up here and say a few words, but he really did the work to make the project happen. Over the summer, he was hired by the city to fill a vacancy at City Hall. And so our newest intern, Matt Pasquini, he prepared tonight's presentation, so he's getting trained for next year's program. The three hydrants with the most votes received Geneva gift certificates. And tonight, we have the three top vote-getters here. After I introduce each one, I'd like those involved to come to the podium and tell us a bit about your inspiration, and then we'll have a moment for photos. So, tonight in third place, located at the southwest corner of First and Fulton, we have Uncaged. The artists are Catherine Newcomb and Liz Whitaker. Would you climb up?
There's really only one artist here. That's Katie.
You said before the meeting that you're the property owner.
Yeah. I'm, well, it's...
She's the inspiration.
I'm the inspiration. It's on my property, and I turned in the application, and then I realized I didn't have artistic ability. So then I called Katie.
Yes. And she is a bird lover, so I said, "Well, would you like me to paint birds on your hydrant?" And she said, "Yes." And so we reviewed her feeders and what birds sat at those feeders, and then painted them on her hydrant.
Is that stencil, or is that just freehand?
That's freehand.
That's her looking at a cellphone picture and then...
No kidding?
Just doing it. Yeah.
Wow.
Pretty amazing.
Well, I've got a trivia question for you, for the artist and/or the property owner. Any idea how much a fire hydrant weighs on average?
Oh.
This is extra gift certificate money, and can you get it right?
Um...
I was talking to the chief about this earlier, too. It's fascinating.
350 pounds. 350.
Good. Between 370 and 800 pounds.
Well, then we won.
Wow. That one looks like it's leaning. What happened?
Well...
No, I'm kidding. It's not...
It was enraged at the moment.
It's a beautiful piece.
Thank you.
How long did it take you?
I don't know. Three or four hours, maybe, coming back.
In just one fell swoop?
No, like the little one day, little...
Okay, got it.
A bird a day, maybe two.
Bird a day.
Yeah.
Well done. Any comments or questions from the council?
Is there a blue jay?
Yes.
Obviously, the bird needs to be seen, but it looks like there's a blue jay.
There's a blue jay, there's a hummingbird. What's the yellow one?
There's a goldfinch. They're robins. And there's a nut, and there's a nuthatch.
Yes.
Well done.
Thank you.
Alderman Burkhart has a question for you.
I just want to point out, the library, Geneva library is lucky to have Katie Newcomb to oversee a lot of their children's programming, and she brings all sorts of creativity to the library. So if you've been in the youth section lately and been amazed by some of the stuff offered there, it's all Katie.
Are you going to do the one of the library when it opens?
Uh, no. I actually recently left my position as of Friday of last week. But, but it was a wonderful place to work, and I really enjoyed it. I was sadly bittersweet.
Endear.
Bittersweet.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vitang, this is third place, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Wow, check this out. We have marked it properly, so we don't mess it up. That's dinner at the Mill Race.
Awesome. In the swamp.
And then in second place, located at the corner at James and River Lane, we have I Need a Hero by Ann Kate Douglas. Ann?
Ann, you have the whole family here this evening, don't you?
Yeah.
Would you like to introduce? Almost?
Yeah.
Would you like to introduce the family members who are present?
Yes. That's my dad, and my sister Emma, and my brother Evan, and my mom.
Fantastic. And who's not here with you tonight?
My older sister Claire.
What's Claire doing?
She is dancing.
Ah, that's important. So what grade are you in?
I'm in seventh grade.
In what school?
Geneva Middle School North.
North. Mr. Bidlack, he's a good guy, isn't he? So what's your major? Undetermined?
Yeah.
I respect that. So the inspiration, everyone, or I need a hero. Why that theme?
Um, so it was just located by the police department, and I did it because the police officers help people, and so I put it there, and I needed, I need a hero.
Well, that's nice. We have a police officer here this evening. What do you think about that, sir?
I think it's pretty cool. Great idea. Very impressive.
Did the police come out and maybe provide lunch or anything while you were...
No.
No? That faces the Harrington, does it not?
Yeah, it does.
I cruised by when you were painting that. Do you remember that?
Yeah, I do, actually.
I waved, and you went, "Eh." Yeah, that was, that was me. That's cool. So how long did it take you?
Um, I worked on it like seven days.
Oh, no kidding? Wow. Are you pleased?
Yeah.
Anything, any redos, or anything you had to...
Um, it took a couple of tries.
Did it?
Just some of them.
That's really neat. Do you have any idea when the first fire hydrant was installed in America?
No.
Chief, do you?
Um, sort of. I just don't remember which city. I don't remember how it was, it first came, came about.
The chief was present. It was 1801, in the city of Philadelphia. You did a heck of a job.
Thank you.
And you're the second-place winner. Guess what you get? A gift certificate with no more school. Picture of your dad, huh? Look at that fancy handwriting on there.
Thank you. Congratulations. It's almost a day like it to give the day off tomorrow. Drum roll, Mr. Vitang.
Then we have in first place, located at 1772 South Randall Road, we have Construction Worker by Vinnie Seracusano. Vinnie?
You're looking at that like it's the first time you've seen it.
It is. I don't remember, no, I remember doing it.
What do you think?
I like it. There's a back to it, too, so there's a whole...
Is that right?
...character constructed, scars on his back, and...
Scars on his back?
Oh, he was working hard.
Clearly. So are you in the trades?
Um, yes.
You are?
I am. We have a school, an art school, School of Art, um, up there in Geneva, and this actually came about as a character design test for all the kids. We did a whole...
Oh, you're kidding?
Character design. Yeah, a whole bunch of characters, like what could we do? How can we make these things look alive?
Oh, that's neat.
How do you make a face come out of this thing with the parameters that we had, and construction workers, firemen, a lot of things came out of it. This was just a lot of fun for everybody.
So you hope to continue the process perhaps next time?
I would love to. It was a lot of fun.
That's awesome. Now, you have a fan club here this evening.
I have a, my wife is here, Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer. So tell us about the time it took.
Four hours. It was far from sinks, so going back and forth, mixing colors is the whole challenge, getting the shrubs out.
So you just removed the shrubs and threw them away?
Don't tell anybody, but that one grew back. Is that a weed? No, that's a shrub that came back.
That's a shrub.
Half the shrub.
While you were designing and painting, a lot of folks swing by and say, "Hey, what are you up to?"
Yes, we did. It's actually been fun. I think we finished this one in May, and it's looking, it's like right outside of the restaurant Jourin.
Sure.
Okay, so right, you walk out their doors, and it goes right into Jourin's patrons, but it's looking at the School of Art, kind of a thing.
Oh, that's perfect.
Has to do that, right? And I see every once in a while, not everybody, but people taking photos with it.
Well, that's nice.
Like they're doing photo, the whole families are taking like, like, just photo ops with it, and I said, "It's kind of funny." They're taking pictures of a fire hydrant with this character.
It's a strange group, isn't it?
It is a strange group, but they're laughing. It makes them laugh, and that made me laugh, so that was fun.
Now, how long have you been in business, Vinnie?
Here is our fourth year up in Geneva.
Things are good?
Things are growing. Kids like to do art.
Indeed, they do.
We have a lot of fun. We do a lot of animation, old-school 2D animation. That's what we're in right now, so we're making our own little movies, hopefully to show the city as soon as we're done.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, we have about 10 to 15 kids working at different times. Over the four years, we've had seniors be accepted into college for their computer animation programs and stuff like that, teaching them how to do it. So their contributions to the film will be shown as soon as this all gets complete. Little Two Minute Cartoons is what we're working on.
Are you old-school yourself in terms of artistry, or do you prefer...
Yes, I am. I used to be a Disney animator for over 12 years.
Wait a minute. And didn't make you just have a birthday?
I think so, and I was invited, yeah. I didn't get the chance to attend.
You were a Disney animator?
Mm-hmm. I worked with the company for 12 years or so. I started on Aladdin in the film. I was an old-school guy, worked for Lion King.
You're very humble. You started on Aladdin.
Mm-hmm.
Is he a nice guy?
It was like '92. Not in that way.
So you also worked on Lion King?
Lion King, yeah, let's say. All throughout Fantasia was one of my big things, where I got to actually lead the cleanup animation department on Donald Duck on the little short in Fantasia. That was kind of fun.
Wait, wait, wait. You were in the cleanup?
Um, yeah, we worked, we did clean...
Donald Duck needs a lot of cleaning?
I was a sis, I was like the head assistant animator for a lot of different animations, how it works. So you had artists that draw Donald Duck in different styles, and it came to me to make it look like 1940's Donald.
Oh, that's cool.
So that was the hardest part, because nobody knew what a hyena looked like, so it was easy to get away with some stuff, but everybody knows what Donald looks like, and it had to be perfect every time, and so it was like the hardest thing I did. But anyway.
And where did you receive your training?
California. Oh, Canada. They hired me out of Canada from...
That's so cool.
It's kind of cool. Then they moved me to Florida, and we finished up until they shut the studio down. They closed the studio in 2004, but we stayed till the end, so it was kind of fun. It was a good experience. And now I'm passing it forward in the school that I have here.
Indeed, you are.
Yeah, so now the kids are getting the knowledge that I got into their school, and that's how they're tightening up their portfolios and getting all this stuff.
That is so cool.
Yeah, and that's what this came out of. This was like the fun expressions, how do you make funny, silly expressions, and it was a fun project. I hope it continues.
Any comments or questions from the council? To Donald Duck's makeup artist?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really cool.
Thank you.
Well, we have first place for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
This is cool, isn't it?
It is cool.
Yeah. It's actually a picture of the council.
Wow. I am going to keep that.
We'd like you to put on the fire hydrants throughout the town.
I will do it. I will do it. I will do it. Thanks.
Ready, Jennifer?
Thank you so much.
Oh, my God. Congratulations. That's so cool. Did you meet at the Navy City Hall?
Uh, no, we're high school sweethearts.
High school sweethearts from Canada?
From New York.
From New York? Well, I can tell by the accent.
What accent?
What, what, what part, what borough?
Uh, Long Island, not the borough.
Okay, Long Island.
Yeah, Nassau.
The real New York.
The real New York, yeah, where everybody is.
Do we talk funny?
I don't want to say it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I just want to add that each painter buys their own paint and supplies, and I think this is just another example of the community spirit that's alive in Geneva, and we thank each one of them for making Geneva a brighter, better, and actually a more fun place to live, because when you drive by, how can you not help but smile?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, artists, if you need to sneak out, we understand. Well, you have no school anymore, so you can stick around all night. By all means, do what you need to do. Item 3B, folks, is a presentation by our friends at Delnor Northwestern Medicine regarding the stroke program. Ms. Presley, welcome. How do you top that?
I'm going to really try hard. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tammy Presley, and I have the privilege of directing Community and Government Affairs for Northwestern Medicine, and it is our pleasure to be here tonight. We are very busy in the tri-cities, particularly from a neurosciences perspective. I know that you all know that in April, we launched the Mobile Stroke Unit, and we have had amazing, amazing stories of morbidity, significant morbidity that has been avoided due to the timely care that we've been able to deliver at the site of the patient's episode. So tonight, I have with me Ann Lindstrom, who is the Stroke Program Director, and I have Ryan Keeler, who is the Stroke Education Coordinator. He is going to present some information relative to a grant-funded research project that we have going on right now, funded by our foundation, to study the community's awareness of and utilization of 911 as it pertains to stroke. So, Brian?
Fantastic. Thank you so much for introducing me, Tammy, and thank you very much for having me in front of the city council on behalf of the stroke program at CDH and Delnor Hospitals. Here to talk to you a little bit, as Tammy mentioned, about a community stroke outreach program that we're doing. It's a grant-funded program, and when she mentioned the mobile stroke unit, we talked about all the great things we can do, both in the hospital and on the mobile stroke unit for our stroke patients. When you look at that, really the main factor is it hinges on people being able to recognize stroke symptoms in themselves or in others and their loved ones, and having them call 911. So that's what we're here really to talk about tonight, and why is it so important? About 795,000 people every year experience a new or recurrent stroke, so that's a stroke about every 40 seconds. And when you look at the statistics and how the population is growing and how the population is aging, the projected incidence and prevalence of stroke is going to increase by about 20 or 30% by 2030, so it's a very prevalent disease. And it has been shown that faster time to treatment can improve outcomes significantly. When you look at stroke, it's the fifth-leading cause of death, but it's the number-one cause of medical disability, preventable medical disability in the country. On par, we spend about $34 to $35 billion a year on the medical disability that results from stroke, and we know that the faster time to treatment gets people the best outcomes. But despite knowing that calling 911 gets people to the hospital the quickest and the safest, and provides us the best outcomes, national estimates show that only about 50% of people experiencing a stroke call 911. So it's imperative that we engage the community and we educate them on how to recognize a stroke, because there's so many people out there at risk for stroke, and when they do recognize it, really give them the ability and the knowledge to go ahead and call 911. And why is that so important? When you get there talking about stroke and you try to quantify it as to what time means, you hear the, you hear the term "time is brain." Sounds very important, and you can talk about neurons and synapses, so the actual brain cells and the connections to the brain cells, but those are just big numbers, and not everybody knows how many neurons are in your brain. But researchers with the American Heart Association were able to take per second, minute, hour, and per stroke, the average amount of brain cells that die, and correlate that to advanced aging. As we age, we lose brain cells. aging. As we age, we lose brain cells. All of our body ages, and so if you take the amount of brain cells lost every minute that your brain is not getting oxygen, and you correlate that to what that would be if it's just accelerated aging, that's about 3.1 weeks of accelerated aging per minute. And then per stroke, looking at the average stroke, um, you lose about 1.2 billion brain cells, and then really that correlates to about 36 years of accelerated aging. So we're trying to prevent that. The faster we can act, the better we can help people out, and that really correlates to that medical disability, whether it's on the cognitive side or the physical and the functional side. So what we wanna do with this program is really engage the community. We wanna look at community-level data. So we looked at two big data points. We looked at the percentage of patients from Geneva that presented to Delnor Hospital for their stroke to the ED, um, that call 911, and we looked at the, of that subset of patients, um, what was the time from when the symptom onset happened to when they actually called 911. And so looking at this, we wanna share this data with you. Over there on the left, um, looking from January of 2017 to July of 2018, all the patients from Geneva who presented to Delnor ED for strokes, 39% of them utilized 911. The other, um, 61%, either were driven by a loved one, drove themselves, waited too long, um, and when you compare that to the average for all the cities in the Delnor primary service area, that's about 47% average for 911 call rate. So one of the things we wanna look at when we're talking about education is increasing that number. However, when you look at that set of patients, the interesting next data point is that those patients that do call 911 in Geneva call very quickly, and that's about 20 minutes faster than the average for all the Delnor cities and all the cities in the Delnor primary service area. That's about a year worth of accelerated aging that we can shape off if the patients get to the hospital quicker. So while only 37% of the people in this 18-month dataset are calling 911, the ones that are calling 911 are calling quickly from the time of onset. And why is this so important and why we're here tonight? We really want to show you the data and then talk about the project, and really the goals. This is a foundation-funded project, and as Tammy mentioned, what we're looking for is, we wanna partner with the local communities, because research shows that if we do individualized education for each community that's culturally relevant, that meets the needs of the community, we can improve outcomes. We know we can get out there in front of Lions Clubs and Rotary Clubs and Kiwanis Clubs, but we're reaching out to you because you guys know the community well. Every community is unique and different, and want to be able to partner with you to identify specific areas or specific ways that we can reach Geneva, put together a plan to provide this education, and then over time be able to, um, disseminate the data, look at it, and hopefully increase the percentage of residents who have strokes in Geneva and activate 911, and then also continue to show that great time from the symptom onset to when they call, um, being cognizant to go ahead and recognize those symptoms. And so this, um, is funded by a role. It's a stroke education coordinator, which is my role. Uh, my background is all critical care nursing, taking care of stroke patients, and it's a dedicated role to community outreach. So our main ask, and, um, we would definitely leave your feedback on the data, um, but would be, who can we work with to be a point of contact to start the conversation about how can we best reach Geneva? Any questions?
Uh, Ryan, you, I'm, I'm gonna try to distill what you said here, and correct me if I'm wrong. While Geneva, on average, makes a 911 call faster than other communities-
Yes.
-39% of our community will even make the call.
Correct. So while you do call quickly, the greater majority of the patients don't call 911, so that means they arrive to the ED generally as we, what we would say is a walk-in, so they're driving themselves, someone else is driving them.
And, and do you, um, for lack of a better word, query those patients as to, why didn't you call?
Uh, we don't necessarily capture that data. We, we get the data anecdotally when we're working with them and caring for them, um, but looking back at this dataset, it was all retrospective. There's a lot to look at. When you talk about especially communities that are close to hospitals like Geneva, where Delnor Hospital is, sometimes what you hear from people is, when you're talking with them, is, hey, I live right there. It's quicker. And although it might seem quicker, you still will get the care quicker, and it's safer, first of all, if you're having symptoms, um, to have 911 drive you. They can care for you along the way, and coming into the back of the ambulance bay gets you care quicker than if you're gonna walk in. Um, we certainly do a great job at the triage desk, working with patients to be able to spot stroke symptoms, but it's still gonna be quicker. And so I think one of the main things is, I live so close. But as for other queries, as we're reaching out and interfacing with the community, we'll begin to get some of those barriers, or we'll be able to get some feedback too, and we can tailor our education to that as well. Yes?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Just a, just a quick question. How, how big is this dataset? How many people were in there?
The dataset for the overall 911 call rate is from, from January 2017 to July 2018, um, represents 49 patients.
Thank you.
Alderman Reddick?
What, what are some of the symptoms that people should be looking for that are maybe the less obvious things to look for when, uh, onset of stroke?
So when we're talking to people about stroke, um, the, one of the new things that's coming out of the American Heart Association is BFAST. You hear FAST a lot. BFAST encompasses two symptoms that people don't always catch. So the B stands for balance, sudden balance changes. Um, I stand, E stands for eyesight, so sudden vision loss in one or both eyes or dizziness, um, blurred vision, and then FAST stands for face drooping, so one side of the face is gonna be unequal. A is for arm weakness. If you have them hold their arms out, one arm will drift down, and then speech is for speech difficulties. And so the, the balance in the eyesight are the ones that, that people don't always catch. It's also, what you see is when you look at the strokes overall, the less severe strokes are the ones who call 911 the least, because people can, they can explain it off. Oh, my left arm's a little numb today, or it's a little weak because I lifted something heavy yesterday. Yes?
Alderman McGowan?
Hello. Thank you so much for coming here and giving this presentation. I appreciate all of this information. I believe I've spoken with you in the past at an event, and I'm, I was disappointed then, and I'm still disappointed today, that this program mentions nothing about stroke prevention, real stroke prevention. Why is that? Why don't, why don't you en-engage the community with steps that they can take to prevent a stroke? Lifestyle choices. Can you tell me about that?
Of course. Real stroke prevention is inherent, and it is built into this education. When putting together the presentation to come before the city council, we wanna look at the data, and certainly any sort of education we do and engage in the community is gonna be built upon that as well.
You didn't mention anything about stroke prevention in your presentation today, and in the past, recent past, when I've seen a demo table from Northwestern talking about stroke, and, and I feel terrible, I mean, this is hard for me to talk about, but I feel it is important to mention. There was nothing on your display table saying, hey, by the way, these are some, you know, eight to 10 steps that you can take to minimize, greatly minimize your risk of stroke. I know not, not all strokes are totally preventable, but there's certainly things that people can do. For example, take steps to lower a person's blood pressure, lose weight if that's, if that's an issue, more daily exercise, drink in moderation. Um, I'm just looking at a list from Harvard Medical. Treat atrial fibrillation, if that's been a diagnosis for you. Carefully monitor and treat your diabetes or, or do, take steps to prevent getting diabetes. Quit smoking. Um, there are other things. A birth control pill that can lead to increased risk of stroke. Why do you mention nothing about that?
So you're correct in mentioning those, and those are actually the, uh, the simple seven, and that's from the American Heart Association, and that is built into our education that we provide our communities. When you look though, we want to do it twofold. We wanna talk about how to manage your risk factors, and we certainly talk wherever we're going about managing blood pressure and managing all that stuff. It's incredibly important.
Pardon my interruption. There was nothing on your display table. Uh, it was a luncheon recently at, um, a golf course. I can't remember what it was. I apologize. It was for community leaders. There was nothing mentioned. So I'm just, I'm, I appreciate everything you do. You are saving lives. I truly appreciate that, but you're only mentioning this now because I brought it up, and it was not any part of your initial presentation. I, I really, really would hope that you would consider, in the future, talk to people. Let the public know, yes, they can call 911 and, and recognize the symptoms and signs of an onco, of an onset stroke, but start by saying, and this is what you can do to prevent a stroke. People need reminders. You can't control what people do, but I really feel like it shouldn't just be brushed aside and said, well, no one's gonna be healthy, so let's just not even mention that and talk about calling 911. So Alderman, we really appreciate those comments, and I think what I-
Tammy, could I invite you up to the microphone, please? Thank you very much.
I think what, what you're asking for is a, as a reasonable thing, which is to be more, um, prominent in prevention messaging as it relates to this particular outreach. I can assure you from a community affairs perspective and my colleague on the community education and outreach side, we spend millions and millions and millions of dollars every year, um, tackling, pressing community health priorities, and one of them is chronic disease, and one of the, um, most important drivers of chronic disease is obesity. And so there is a plethora of programs that we bring to the community in all of our primary and secondary municipalities where we talk about healthy lifestyles. We talk about that internally in terms of building a culture of health at Delnor. It is embedded in absolutely everything that we do as leaders to be a role model in terms of what does it mean to live a healthy lifestyle? Food, beverage, hydration, sleep. We talk about all of these things, second nature in everything that we do. And so, but what I'm hearing you say is that you would like to see it more pronounced as it specifically relates to, um, stroke messaging and, and specific programs related to stroke, and we, and we would be happy to-
Absolutely.
-consider that, and, and we appreciate that feedback.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
May I ask, um, is there any stipulation? You received money from, uh, money was received from, um, a foundation for this, uh, community outreach. Was there anything saying that you were not supposed to talk about stroke prevention? It's more 100% focused on the treatment once a stroke has already happened? I'm just curious.
Um, there, there really is no stipulations in there. Really, the goal is, and as Tammy mentioned, inherent in our education as well, when we get out to service clubs and we give our presentations, give our presentations in libraries and talk to people, we do have the risk factors built in. Um, and I definitely appreciate the feedback. Um, so we're looking at it from two perspectives. We do always build in the risk factors, and we get out there to the communities, we do talk about that. That's a key to prevention. And we also know that there's a huge set of the population that's already very high risk. So we definitely will talk to them about the risk factors, but knowing that they are already at high risk, it's our duty to also tell, talk to them about how to recognize stroke and call 911. But in every presentation we give and we go out, we do talk about what you mentioned, the healthy seven, and we talk about the risk factors and we build it into what we do.
Okay, because I didn't see anything about the healthy seven when you were, when you had the display. I remember purple tablecloth. There were the stress balls, squeeze things, pens, other nice giveaways, but there was nothing there about the healthy seven. So that'd be an amazing addition to have for the community, 'cause why not? Just try that. Um, may I ask one more question, please?
Absolutely. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, it was mentioned a few times that, um, the work that you're doing is funded by a foundation. Who gave the money to the foundation? Was it just, was it one particular source, or was it just coming, coming from many different sources?
I have to defer that question.
Well, this was a, a grant provided by the Northwestern Medicine Foundation. So this is local donors that come together. There is a board, of course, that decides which projects are going to be funded. And so Dr. Shone King, I think, is the principal investigator on this. Yeah, so there was an application that was presented to the foundation, and they determined that this was worthwhile to support.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. Um, I was just curious if you could talk a little bit more about, um, the symptoms. You, you ran through them quickly. Um, does a person need to be experiencing all of those symptoms to be having a stroke, or if, if they're just experiencing one or two?
Any, any of the symptoms.
Okay.
Depending on where the stroke happens, it's different for everybody. It's another issue that makes it difficult. It's not one symptom for every person.
Sure, and I, you know, I, my husband gets migraines and has a lot of these symptoms with his migraines, and I, I know several people in that boat, so that's always a little scary.
It's hard.
Yeah. Um, and I, I'm also curious if you have any, um, data or just a, a guess on why people aren't calling? Do, do you think they just, they don't recognize the symptoms, or they just, they think it's nothing, or why, why is it such a low call rate?
Yeah, when you look at it, um, and I, as I mentioned, when we engage the community in Geneva, we'll, we'll, we'll find the specific barriers, but a lot of it, sometimes people think about not wanting to bother if, if, you know, the symptoms go away. They're very mild.
Sure, 'cause it doesn't seem that extreme.
Doesn't seem extreme. Certainly insurance sometimes plays a part if they're talking, think about what does the ambulance ride cost? What does the ED cost? Do I really wanna go with this? Um, and a lot of it is, is behavioral and, and, you know, you can have, you know, the knowledge, you might be feeling it, but there's a lot of different, there's so many different factors that factor into whether someone's gonna call or not.
Sure.
So, but being able to engage is gonna be good to see what are the specific barriers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, my question is somewhat related to what you were discussing. Just if you have these symptoms, your arm is numb, you know, you have balance issues, go to bed, feel fine the next day. Should that person still call?
Yes. That, what you're describing is a TIA, so we, they call it a mini-stroke. It's where you have stroke symptoms, but then they go away. Your body either breaks down the clot or it takes care of the issue. But the way to describe it, the way I've heard someone describe it really well, is it's like having chest pain before you have a heart attack. So it's your body telling you something's wrong. We still encourage people who, where the symptoms go away, they need to go to the hospital, because they need to get a workup to figure out what's causing those symptoms. People who have that mini-stroke are, are at a great risk, 10 times risk of having a full stroke, and generally it happens within like 48 hours to a week.
Okay, that was gonna kind of be my next question, is what is the decay on that? So if two weeks have gone by, at that point, should I just completely say, I'm out of the woods and not worry about it?
We would still, still tell people to go, because even though the risk lessens over time, it's still a 10 times risk once you've had those symptoms.
I can understand why it would be a tough call for, for people. I mean, I, I had an experience, um, earlier in the year where I was walking my dogs and I practically keeled over. It was in the wintertime, and, um, you know, I actually thought I was having a heart attack, but then later in the day, I was kinda like, okay, you know, I was still having chest pain, but I'm still here, so it couldn't have been that bad. And, you know, I'm gonna sound profoundly stupid for saying this, but I did weigh in the cost, um, because with insurance, a severe medical problem is still catastrophic for a lot of people. Um, I ultimately, through, uh, my family forcing me to get it addressed, I agreed to go see the doctor the next day, refused to go to the ER. Um, but after that, I ended up having all battery tests, ended up being an infection in my lung. You know, I'm still here, thank goodness. Um, but, um, it wasn't a heart attack, and it was extremely expensive, even with insurance. So what would you tell that person? And I know being dead is the most expensive cost, so don't throw that one back at me, but, I mean, really, what would you tell somebody that's wrestling with that? I mean, if they're looking at, it's probably nothing, but it's gonna cost me $5,000 or $10,000 to go through all these tests at a time, and then I'm gonna walk out and there's nothing wrong with me.
Yeah, I definitely don't think we'd say being dead, but, um, I see where you're going with that. I think what we would say is, we talk about how stroke is the number-one cause of disability, and even though it might be minor, if you have an issue with communication afterwards, you can't go back to work. And so cost is definitely an issue, and we hear it from a lot of people, and it's difficult especially, but if you, if the symptoms prohibit you from going back to work, then you look at a lifetime of lost wages, or if there are more profound symptoms, you think about having long-term care and caregivers, and it really on the other end adds up exponentially.
Thank you. It's a good answer. Thank you.
Alderman Reddick, then Alderman Bruno?
Yeah. To clarify, being dead is cheap, okay? That's really is the easy way. Um, thank you again for your presentation and your patience. I appreciate it. Um, you know, having had this touch my family directly, um, you know, the, the two or three years following, uh, a loved one who's, who's gone through a severe stroke, what you described, the cost and the emotional, uh, investment and the time and the, you know, it is a tremendously taxing, uh, experience. So, um, Alderman Clemmons, go, go to the emergency room, pay your deductible and co-pay, because, uh, if it is something of that nature, the, the, just the taxing, financially, emotionally, and all the other things that go along with, with a stroke victim in your, in your household is, uh, really, really something to deal with. So I appreciate your presentation, and thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, yes, thank you for your presentation. Uh, you probably don't have this information, uh, off the top of your head, but the, the, the lower response rate of Geneva makes me wanna, makes me think about, I'd be interested to know what the response rate is for those communities and neighborhoods in close proximity to the hospital. It's just, you know, I'm probably two minutes away from the hospital from, from my house, and I could see, probably have to be pretty well-laid up to call out an ambulance, um, as opposed to getting my wife to drive me two minutes.
You make a good point about that. The level of data we collect goes down to zip code, um, so we don't have, um, it would, built off the database we pull from.
Sure.
We can pull by zip code, um, but we haven't looked at that level to see if it's close enough in proximity and if it gets a little higher going further away.
Yeah, just a point of interest. Thank you.
In the spirit, if I may, perhaps Anne can address this as well, but in the, in the spirit of point of interest, do, do men or women, or are men or women, which one is less likely to make the call?
That's a good question. Um-
I can guess.
When you, when you, when you look at the data, generally it's more women.
Just looking at Clemmons, I can make a guess, but it's like, I mean-
Men? Yeah. So, um, men are more likely, more or less likely to call.
And thi- this is a, um- Is that right? I've, we've had great conversations with Chief Antonori regarding the extraordinary care provided by the MSU, the mobile stroke unit. In the data you presented, the youngest stroke victim was how young?
In the data, we didn't look at it by age, but certainly we have patients, younger, more younger people are having strokes now when we're looking at the data. Certainly after every decade, after age 55, your risk of stroke goes up, but we're finding younger people having stroke as well.
In the 30s?
Yes. And there's a lot of different factors that play into that. Um, there's gender factors, there's obesity factors and everything, but we are seeing a lot younger patients having strokes. And stroke can happen at any age. People think of it as an elderly person's disease, but it can happen from infants all the way to the end of life.
So what can we do to help?
To help us? Um, I really appreciate the feedback. Um, thank you very much. Um, our big ask is, coming off of this, um, a point of contact to, um, get some people, um, both the municipality and maybe other leaders in the community to start working with. We wanna collaborate with the city of Geneva to make some, um, plans for education for the city, whether we can get into the school system. No, we know we can talk to middle schoolers and high schoolers. About 75% of the people who call 911 are the bystanders, and so they're a great group of people to get to, talk about different ways of messaging the community, to let the community know what the data looks like and let them know we're here, um, to educate them. So really a point of contact to start the conversation today was to get in front of you, get your feedback, knowing that we wanna, um, make a more detailed plan going forward for how we're gonna reach the city of Geneva, and then to be able to come back and show how the data's changing, um, and show how we're getting, how many people we reach, and what we're hearing from them about why they don't call, and just get their feedback and engage the community.
Would you object if we brainstormed internally and then reached out to Tammy with respect to who the best people would be?
No, that'd be fantastic.
From the city's perspective?
That'd be fantastic.
May I invite the chief up for a moment? And you can hang out with Ryan here. I got a, an interesting question for you. When your team responds to a medical emergency, phrase this delicately, and perhaps even the police could respond as well, um, is there oftentimes a delayed call that's made because we didn't think it was really that bad, and then things got progressively worse, and perhaps a firefighter says to him or herself, man, you should've made the call 20 minutes ago, or an hour ago, or two hours ago?
It happens more often than not, than you think. So, all the way up to including being unfortunately deceased because of the delay. So, I mean, early, something's going on, wrong, sorry, but you call. And you have to call, and, um, our paramedics can evaluate, determine the proper course of action, whether it's a release, in other words, it was nothing, versus getting him to the hospital. So it happens virtually every week, where you could use a little, could've used a little bit more time. And it's just human nature. It's not just strokes, it's-
Yeah, it's, it's every, yeah, exactly.
-chest pains, trouble breathing, that type of thing, so.
I guess my question then would be-
Oh, Dean, your microphone, please?
My question would be then, how's, what is the continuity the, then between your department and Delnor? And, and who, who- And who makes the call to Delnor to dispatch their unit?
On a stroke protocol...
I mean, who says this is a stroke patient? We need to get Delnor out here?
Two ways it happens today in the protocols. One is on the initial 911 call to TRICOM, based on the call, they'll classify it as a stroke, dispatch as a stroke, and simultaneously notify CDH for the Mobile Stroke Unit and the fire department, and the ambulances come at the same time.
Okay.
Now, we'll turn them around if it turns out to be something that's other than a stroke. The second way is we get a call for something else, and we get there, and during the field stroke tests, we determine that it's probably a stroke, then we'll call directly and have the stroke unit. And we'll also, if it's outside the guidelines of the Mobile Stroke Unit, we'll do a stroke alert to the ER so they're ready to go when we get there. So there's protocols for both of those, inside the timeline for MSU and then outside the timeline.
Okay. So you're going to treat the patient, and, I mean, I could see where you have your unit racing to Delnor and the Delnor unit or the Northwestern unit. I mean, obviously, they're communicating, but do you have much of that?
We don't take the patient to Delnor if we've activated the Mobile Stroke Unit. We intercept with the Mobile Stroke.
So in other words, you're stationary, and then they'll come and take care of it?
We'll transfer it over, and then they'll take them to CDH, which is a more...
And Chief, you had an extraordinary example of this very thing happening right here.
Yeah, we had a -- mind if I talk through it? Just real quickly, we had a call a few months ago here downtown, office building, office above a restaurant, and a relatively young patient, 43, 42 years old, presenting some symptoms of stroke. The engine medics got there first before the ambulance and did the Cincinnati Stroke Test and said, "There's enough evidence here of a stroke." So we invoked Medic 34. They intercepted. We had them actually park on Fourth Street in the state. They did their workup, they did their CAT scan, and they found ischemic stroke in the image, and they started treatment. And I think it was, what, two to three days later, he walked out of CDH with no deficiencies at the time. And he's back to work and 43 years old, and I don't know if that would have happened if we hadn't found that. So it was the youngest at the time. I don't know if it still is the youngest time that was treated by the Mobile Stroke Unit, so.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be perfectly clear, and with the chief who just said sorry, as if I was giving advice that people ought not call, I thought part of this is trying to figure out how we can get those calls up.
Exactly.
And part of that is understanding why people don't call. And as somebody who thought they were having a heart attack and didn't call, I was explaining why I didn't. So if you want people calling, you have to be thinking, why aren't they doing it?
Thank you for volunteering as chairman of the task force. We appreciate that.
So, just to clarify, so yes, if you think you're having a stroke or any other crisis, call.
We're at 39% as a community. Internally, is there a goal to achieve X by a certain date, or obviously, 100% would be great?
I mean, 100% would be fantastic. When we look at goals, we want to at least be greater than the national average.
Which is 47%.
Which is the national average. That was the average for the Delnor service area. The national average is just over 50%. We want to be better than that, but when you look at overall and the volume, and our goal would be to shoot for that and then get it higher.
Got it. Anyone else on the dais? Or perhaps some of the audience? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I will circle back with Tammy, and we'll get it going.
Sounds good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Item 3C, folks, is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday on November 24, 2018. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation? So moved. Motion by Marx, seconded by Swanson. It's going to be a big Saturday. We saw a report today that with confidence in the marketplace, it's more likely that folks will actually leave their home and shop, as opposed to relying to just online sales, which is interesting. So we'll see. All in favor of the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Item 4, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be acted upon with one motion. Is there a motion? So moved. Alderman Marx makes the motion. Is there a second? Alderman Swanson makes the second. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burghardt.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Rodecky.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes unanimously. We skip down to item number 9, Other Items and Correspondence. 9A is to accept the fiscal year 2018-2019 Second Quarter Goals Status Report. Is there a motion to accept the report as presented? So moved. Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Ruby makes the second. Any questions or comments for City Administrator Dawkins or Assistant City Administrator McCready? Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. I was happy to see something about a chaplain being added to staff. Has that been accomplished?
There's still, actually, chief just walked out, but they're still in the process of interviewing folks and getting that in line.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second to accept the report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Fantastic. Passes unanimously. Item number 10, folks, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our distinguished city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration. How's that?
I like it.
Total bills for payment, $1,263,879.70.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as are read the individual items that add up to that sum. Can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes a motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in our packet and on the city's website. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Alderman Burghardt makes the second. Any additional questions or comments regarding the bills? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burghardt.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Rodecky.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Item 10 passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero abstentions. We skip down to Committee of the Whole Items of Business, there are none. Item 12, Presentation of Ordinances, Petitions, Resolutions, and Bid Awards. Item 12A is to recommend Resolution Number 2018-105, adopting IDOT from BLR 14220, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. So moved. Motion by Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Marx. Mr. Babica is here this evening. Are there any questions regarding this matter? Seeing none? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 12A passes unanimously. Item 12B is to recommend Resolution Number 2018-106, authorizing execution of change order number five for the wastewater treatment plant improvement with IHC construction companies, increasing the total contract amount from $10,394,013 to $10,584,01. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion by, is that Marx? Seconded by Kilburg. Mr. Van Gescam is here this evening to answer any questions anyone might have regarding this matter. Seeing none? Hearing none? I think a roll call would be appropriate on this one, as the city attorney nods aggressively toward me.
You through?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burghardt.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Rodecky.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero abstentions, item 12C passes unanimously. Item 12D is to recommend Resolution Number 2018-108, a resolution authorizing the financial commitment for the Safe Route to School Program cycle 2019 in the amount of $65,000. Motion by Clemmons.
Second.
Seconded by Ruby. Questions or comments for the city administrator? Alderman Rodecky.
Yeah, just one quick comment. I want to thank Dorothy Flanagan, who actually pointed this out to me and brought it to my attention, that this -- these funds were available, that they were on 100% basis, and she dropped me a note and kind of got the ball rolling for us to look into it, so kudos to Dorothy. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, you might elaborate a little bit on what this will provide for the community as it relates to school safety.
So if we are successful, the grant we are proposing would be to purchase 10 solar-powered speed feedback signs to be installed throughout the city. Mostly, because it's a Safe Routes to School program, they have to be in and around school areas, so we've identified five various areas where those could be. We are also seeking a resolution from the school district, which they will present at their November 12 meeting.